Okay. Welcome to the June 3rd. Point made between the Lakeville Board of Selectmen and the Lakeville Finance Committee and our Capital Expenditures Committee. Some of these members do overlap. So, first thing on the agenda, it is 30th, I'm sorry, June 3rd, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Agenda item number one, in accordance with the Governor's order-
Yeah, sorry, we just need to open up our meeting.
Okay, you open up yours and then I'll read everything for everybody. How does that sound?
Okay, that sounds good. So, it's what, 6:38 on June 3rd, Finance Committee is opening up.
Okay, I can tell if you're frozen, George or... Okay. All right, agenda item number one, in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency. The June 3rd, 2020 public meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group conversation. However, to do this meeting in progress, please go to www.lakecam.com. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. All right, I will continue with the script that we need to read for our remote meetings, and I will read it for both the Board of Selectmen and the- So, as a preliminary matter, I am Leah Phoebe, Chairman of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members, staff and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So, we will start with the Selectmen's office. So, we just said I was here. Selectman Richard LaCamera-
Here.
Here. Town Administrator Maureen Candido. I thought she was here.
I'm here.
There she is, okay. Tracy Craig McGee, Executive Assistant to the Selectmen and Town Administrator.
Here.
All right. George, do you want to do your roll call so we can-
Sure.
Okay.
So, Darren Beals-
Here.
Jennifer, what's your last name?
Thebiora.
Biora, here.
It's hard like mine.
Yeah.
Here.
Thank you.
And we have George Mahopolis, who is the Chair. So, our newly created this year, recreated Capital Expenditures Committee is made up of Richard LaCamera, Selectman, who we've already checked in with, George Mahopolis, Chairman of the Finance Committee, Maureen Candido, who is the Town Administrator, Darlene Donnelly, who is actually not here, she represents the position of Community Person appointed by the Town Moderator, and we do have with us Kevin Kelleher, correct, Kevin?
Correct. Yeah, present.
Okay, he is also appointed by the Town Moderator. So, I will continue on. This open meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020 due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. Order, which you can find postable for agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. Okay, for this meeting, the Lakeville Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee are convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Let's see, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, question, or motion. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. Lastly, H and any vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Any questions from anybody? All right, as this is a budget meeting and Selectman LaCamera is our budget person from the Board of Selectmen, I will ask if he wants to take over or if he wants me to do it. Rich, do you mind?
I'll do it. I just wanted to note that Darlene has showed up as well.
Oh, there she is. So, we have Darlene Donnelly here with us too. Thank you, Darlene.
Okay, so I would suggest that we take the capital plan first. So, Kevin and Darlene can leave the rest of the meeting while we talk about the budget. So, does everybody have a copy of the capital plan? If not, Maureen will put it up on the screen.
Richard?
Yes.
Do you mind if I interrupt for one second? I'm assuming I've never been through one of these processes, is that you're going to go line item by line item? Do we, if we have questions, do we note them as you go through the line item or am I waiting for a certain time to ask questions?
Well, you can ask questions on each line item.
Okay, thank you so much.
No problem. What I want to say first of all is, is that, of course, because of this whole situation, we, the Capital Expenditure Committee hasn't had the opportunity to meet, you know, and follow the process that, you know, has been set up. So, that's been a problem. We just haven't been able to do that. So, what the Board of Selectmen did at one of their meetings, oh, a couple of weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, is we looked at the capital plan and we actually reduced the capital plan significantly. And we did it for one reason. We had a million dollars in, over a million dollars in free cash and we basically cut it in half. And the reason why we cut it in half was because we wanted to preserve available funds in case we needed them. So, the recommendations that the Board of Selectmen have made and that what we're presenting here tonight is to let everybody know, including the Capital Expenditure Committee and the Finance Committee, what we're trying to accomplish. So, what we'll do, depending upon the revenue situation, is that in September, you know, we will have a special town meeting to hopefully, you know, address a lot of the other items that we're not going to be able to fund, you know, at the annual town meeting. So, I see that Maureen has, you know, put up the Capital Expenditure Committee and the Capital Expenditures items and basically you're going to see a tan color, you know, the request for 2021. And basically, if you take the first two items there, we're proposing to fund for two police cruisers but not fund the unbacked cruiser that was replaced. So, once again, if anybody has any questions as we go through this, please don't hesitate to ask. The Fire Department had asked for a pickup truck of $50,000 and we have chosen to delay that until the fall. We didn't, I don't want to say it's not a priority, but it's something that, you know, we can wait. So, that is not going to be funded at this.
Richard?
Yes.
Just to jump in, not knowing what you have done, I'm assuming the different police departments and so forth, they proposed their budget and they want two police cruisers. What process and who takes part in the process to determine that they in fact need the cruisers, like they're replacing cruisers from 2004 or something? I mean, what is, how does that process work?
It's a combination of the year of the cruiser and the number of miles on that cruiser. Once the cruisers get above 150,000 miles, they need to be replaced and they should not be used, you know, by the police officers because of safety reasons.
Okay, okay. So, so that's something that the Selectmen take an active role in determining that those, the two cruisers that they're buying are replacing two cruisers that have over 150,000 miles?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the next item down that we just talked about, Kevin, if you look, you see it's a 2008, you know, pickup truck and it's obvious-
Yes, I did catch that. I liked that, that was a good add-on there.
Yeah, so it's obvious that needs to be replaced, but we have another pickup truck that's available right now that can be used and we're just waiting until the fall to address that. The next item, the next item down, if, you know, if we had the Capital Expenditure Committee go through their normal process, we would have discussed all this stuff.
I know, I think that would have been great, yeah.
Unfortunately-
I understand.
We haven't had that opportunity to do that. Okay, the next down, the next one down is the, is a generator. The town had approved $17,000 last year for the police cruiser, I mean, for police cruiser, for the generator. Well, that was to really try to repair the generator and the generator is extremely old and it keeps breaking down and we need to purchase a new generator. That generator provides all the backup for the town hall, the Fire Department, you know, our internet service, our email services and so forth. So, we're proposing to purchase the $55,000 generator. Okay?
Very good, yep.
All right, going down to the Highway Department, if you scroll up a little bit there, please, Maureen, thank you. So, the Highway Department is, you know, the roadwork that, $375,000 in roadwork. Once again, this is not what they call Chapter 90 money. This was additional money that was requested by the Highway Superintendent to do additional roadwork. And once again, we're recommending at this point to hold off that we figure out, you know, where we are as far as the budget is concerned. The next one is the Starwatt Management Consulting Services for $100,000. We don't need the $100,000 for this year's capital plan because we have monies that are available that are run spent. Somebody there who's on, please put the muscle on, please. So, we don't need that one. We have a new, we're proposing a new 110 sander and plow to replace a 1993 and a 1995 sander and plow, and this needs to be done. These should have been replaced a while ago. There are safety issues and they're old and they're rusted and so forth, so they need to be done. The, the next one, as far as the used cab is concerned and chassis, we're going to hold off on that. The used sweeper is a, is a 2005 sweeper and we only have one. And Highway Superintendent has to continue to repair, you know, that sweeper and keep it together. And that is a priority that needs to be addressed. And now, the other one is the, another highway attachment device that we're just not going to go ahead with right now.
Rich, you're going to go ahead with or not going to go ahead with?
With the skid steer.
The skid, yeah.
No, we're not going to have, but only, only the ones in beige.
Oh, okay, very good.
Okay. Continue on down. The landfill transfer station as far as, I'm sorry, up one, this is historical commission, the geological survey that they want to do and we're in favor of doing it, but once again, we want to hold off until the fall when the monies are available to do it. Okay, the transfer station, this is seal coding, the transfer station parking lot and we're going to hold off on that, you know, as well. General Government, going down to the ID budget, we're going to not have to defer, we have monies available in other accounts for some IT items, so we don't need the $10,000 right now. Security systems for town locations, this is badly needed. We need to put some security systems and cameras in some of the buildings for security reasons and I know this was tried to budget a year ago and this is, this is a priority as well.
Rich, quick question?
Sure.
If you don't mind. On that item there, are these all systems that can, are integrated to police station?
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, when we installed the police station, we updated all the technology for all the cameras and all the security cameras can be viewed at the dispatch center by the dispatcher.
Wonderful.
Madam Chair? Could I request that when individuals speak that they just say their first names so that, because I, I'm not really watching, so I just need to know who's speaking.
Okay, people can just identify themselves so that Tracy can reflect it in the note.
As far as the park commission, as far as the park commission is concerned, the irrigation system, this has got to be a hold at this point, even though it's listed there because we're going to have to talk over the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, I have to talk about the park commission's budget because they have some problems that need to be addressed. COA, new flooring, it's not an emergency or priority, there's nothing really wrong with the flooring, but, so we're going to put a hold on that to evaluate that for, for later time. So, move it up there, Maureen, please. Okay, so the next one down is the peach barn roof. Now, this is the roof at the Betty's neck. There's a big hole in that roof. That roof was partly funded to be repaired a year ago and it needs a new roof. And this is the additional money that's needed for that roof. This needs to be done. Otherwise, we're going to have a problem, you know, with that building and creating a lot of damage. Okay, the $50,000 for the new highway garage facility, the Finance Committee probably remembers that in 2017, $179,000 was appropriated for a, for mobile trailers to, to use as office space for the highway barn. Well, the quotes didn't come in to where we wanted it to be. Yeah. Where, where we wanted it to be. And, and so it's going to cost another $15,000 to build the office the way it should be built. And once again, we can't delay this any longer because those who are familiar with the, the facility last year, and this was a pretty large, it needs to be addressed. So, so basically, we had a million dollars, over a million dollars available in free cash to use for capital items. And right now, we're proposing to spend $505,000 for the capital items and defer these other items until the town meeting, the fall town meeting, until we figure out what needs to be done. All right, so does anybody have any questions? You're on mute, Kevin.
I couldn't, right? Richard, Kevin, so the, come the fall, this over a half a million that you're holding like an escrow, basically, what is your, you're waiting to figure out what before you go ahead with this other half a million potentially in the fall, on the fall meeting?
The reason why we're holding off is because we're going to talk about the budgets with the Finance Committee. We're anticipating a 10% reduction in state aid, which is at least $200,000, but, and we have accommodated for that. But if it gets worse than that, we want to make sure that we protect all the services and all our staff if it comes a problem. And that's why we're not using all the free cash at this point.
Good, good move, Richard, thank you.
Okay, so you're all set, Kevin and Darlene, so you can log off if you want.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks. Okay. All right, the Finance Committee, we also have Finance Committee, we have Todd Passit on here who's our town accountant. So, we wanted to make sure that if, as we go through this, because this has got a little complicated and we want to make sure that we get it right, okay? So, we certainly can ask any questions, you know, that you want. The first thing I want to try to explain is that, you know, the state has kind of put our backs to the wall here because the way they've set it up is that the Senate has passed a bill for a quorum that is 10% of our, our all towns' quarums that can only vote on financial items for the town. Any other items that are non-financial items, we have to have the total quorum there, which is 100 people in the town of Lakeville. So, that's why you'll see when we get, when we, when we're going to do the warrant review in a couple of weeks, we have the annual town meeting, which includes all the financial issues having to do with the town. And then the second one is a special town meeting, which has to do with the non-financial issues with the town. So, that's why you're going to see two different warrants, okay? Now, they're talking about changing it, but wait till the last minute, we have to post, you know, our, we have to put, post our warrant by Thursday, I believe it is, Tracy, if I remember correctly.
The legal ad will be in the paper on Thursday. It needs to be posted on the town's website.
Right, so we, we got no choice now, we have to move forward. One of the other things that we talked about, I know Todd was, has been involved, you know, with other towns and discussions as well, and Maureen was on a, a video this past week is saying, well, why don't we do a 1/12 budget, okay, versus going to town meeting and doing a, a budget? So, the 1/12 budget can be very complicated, you know, and I don't know whether Maureen or Todd want to say something about that because you have to fund certain things. So, does Maureen or Todd, do you want to say something, Todd, or?
I could just give you a quick synopsis. So, 1/12 budget is not 1/12 of your budget. So, it's, it's a portion of your budget that covers all your salaries and, and all your expenses, but you also have to pay forward all the things that are your contractual obligation and your things like pensions and things like that. So, anything that you have, you have to fund that first month in the budget. So, if you think of it as a 1/12 plus budget and that you would have to do every month until you could get a town meeting with a quorum. We're hoping to get the town meeting together with the quorum and make it happen in June and that way we can proceed in a normal manner. There's lots of pros and cons, but the only reason we would proceed with a 1/12 budget at this point is if we could not get that quorum. So, I don't know if Todd wants to add anything to that.
Okay, so we decided to go ahead with the budget, you know, as planned, and we're having our town meeting. And so, what we're going to do, we're going to talk about the revenue numbers, we're going to talk about the budget itself in a minute. And if adjustments need to be made, we will make those adjustments in the fall, you know, to adjust the budgets, whether it's up or down, depending upon the situation. So, that was the plan that we have put forward. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Hey, Rich, it's Brian. Just for expectation setting or for anybody that can answer, when do we typically start to see those payments or at least the forecast from the state start to come in as we get closer to that town meeting?
Okay, we'll talk about that in a second, Brian. We're going to talk about revenue projections as well.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions? George, you have any questions?
No, we're good.
Okay. All right, so let's talk about fiscal '20's budget for a second, okay? I guess the good news about the fiscal '20 budget is that the revenue projections, we have already exceeded all of our revenue projections as far as the town is concerned, local receipts, which is good news. The state tells us, and Todd, I think, I don't know if you got any further information, Todd, but the state is telling us that we're going to receive all the state aid that we were respected, expected. And I believe we're still due, Todd, help me out, almost $200,000, I think.
That's correct. We do have one line item that's going to come in just about 100,000 short of the original state estimate to do with smart growth, but everything else should come in on, on budget.
How much was that, Todd? It's Leah.
It was 102,000 and change.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So, so that's good news. We don't have to worry about the revenue projections for '20. Now, we do have to worry about two things, though. The, the park enterprise account, as you know, they have been shut down since mid-March, I guess, at this point, and they're not taking in any revenue at all, okay? So, the enterprise account, as you know, they generate their own revenue and is offset by the expenses. We're estimating they're going to be shot by $25,000, you know, as of June 30th. But the retained earnings, which is like free cash for them, they have $124,000 in free cash. So, what we'll have to do is that we'll have to transfer money from that to supplement the park revenue account. Then, the same thing applies as far as the landfill is concerned, you know, we've been closed for three and a half months, oh, well, two and a half months now, they're starting to open up. They are opened up now finally, and they'll be starting to get some more revenue in June. But Todd, the town accountant, is estimating that they're going to be about $35,000 short, you know, as well. But once again, they have retained earnings, you know, that can be used. So, anybody have any questions on the revenue side of fiscal '20?
The only question I have is with the expenses not being in place. So, I understand that there's going to be, there's the revenue component that's being missed, but we're also going to have, the expenses are eliminated for the enterprise accounts. Well, specifically for parks, what's our, there was a deficit going into it, right? The last time we had a conversation with them, there were some issues where the accounting was a little confusing. Did we ever get that rectified?
For fiscal '20, Judge?
Yeah. Yeah. Do you remember the, the conversations that we had with, during budget conversations? The, some of the accounting was not adequate in that they were using cash from the drawer and all, you know, so, so there was some confusion as to how much they truly had, how much their expenses truly were. I'm just wondering if we ever figured that out?
Well, I can tell you, one of the things that we have met with the management firm that runs the Loom Pond Lodge, and we've brought up a number of questions, a number of issues that we have to address, so some of them have not been resolved yet, but I mean, as far as, Todd, you there?
Yes.
I don't know of any other issues, I think the question is how cash is being handled, and the procedure and the process needs to be addressed.
Okay, right, and we have also had the town's independent audit firm spend some time out there and give them some recommendations on improvements. But to your other question, George, regarding this year for Park, we're anticipating about a $75,000 shortfall in revenue. But you're right, they have curtailed a lot of their spending, and they're really only doing essential spending for the balance of this year, so sort of the net revenue shortfall, or net revenue deficit is about $25,000, to, to what Rich mentioned earlier. On the, on the landfill side, the revenue shortfall may be closer to $50,000, but they're, they're pretty much going to spend out their budget due to the increases in the, you know, cost of disposal.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Rich, I know the day that George is talking about, that the budget meeting, we had a real, a bigger question about the projected revenues by the Parks Department, is that part of what you're talking about too, George, but the revenues were projected for 2021? I know we spent a lot of time talking about whether the revenues were possible, so, of course, going into 2021, that's going to be a problem too, so, but, you know, I think, I know that's what, we also talked about that.
Maureen, you know, I just wanted to address you, George, and let you know, so one of the revenue issues that you were talking about was probably the haunted house that we didn't end up having last November, and then that shorted us some revenue right off the bat there that we had always relied on. And then going back, I think it was 2019, that there was a couple revenue shortages in what we had in our liquor sales that we were expecting. That was, that was technically, I think FY19, I think it was a June shortage that we experienced that in. But, but as far as cash controls going forward, I've been working with our IT Director, and we're getting point-of-sale equipment ready, if, if the parks do open, yes, we have point-of-sale equipment, and we have swipes for the gates, and we're working in our Viewpoint software to come up with a form for people to be able to buy the season passes online, too. So, you know, we're, we're working on that, and to tighten up our, to tighten up our methods and control methods, based on, you know, common sense and, and what the audits had said as far as cash control. So we are addressing that, we just haven't had the opportunity, apparently, everyone's addressing everything, and everyone's back, all the people are back, backfilling for the last two months, so that should be this week, next week, that they'll be coming in and, and talking to our IT Director, so it is moving forward.
No, it sounds great, George, again, sorry. No, it sounds fantastic, thank you for the clarity. I think the other thing that we just need to make sure is that they have a way of purchasing the, the food concessions and other stuff, so it's not coming directly from the daily sales, so.
Yep, good.
I'm glad to hear that you guys are doing some, it sounds like you guys are doing a lot of the right things, and, and I'm glad that you guys revisited the vendors that we had with, with Loom Pond Lodge as well, so fantastic, that's great to hear, thank you.
Thank you, George.
Maureen, it's Brian, I just want to say, like Georgia, that's great that we're looking at POS systems for those areas, and we also take an opportunity to look at any other areas where we take cash, like I think.
The landfill, the landfill, yeah, yeah. The landfill actually should be all at the same time, it's, it's going to be the same equipment, it'll, it'll be connecting in the same way, so we'll be doing it as one project with two parts. So we want to have as much continuity, you know, and using the same systems as, as we possibly can, so Tim's seeing how he can integrate that into what we already have, as far as the bank that we work with now, and the Viewpoint software that we work with now, seeing which way is the best way to go.
That'd be great, I mean, given the cash handling is one of the reasons transfer has been closed, one of many, but one of, nice to scratch that off the list.
No, but, you know, it becomes more prevalent as, you know, different users use the space. I, I know some of the, the current users are, are cash-heavy people, and, but people in their 40s and 30s and, and lower tend not to keep cash on hand, so this will go a long ways to making sure that we get more people, you know, in a more convenient way, and we have more control over our dollars.
Excellent.
Okay, going back to fiscal '20's budget, as far as the expenses are concerned, you know, we do have some areas that, you know, will need to be addressed, and, but we feel confident that those shortages or deficits in some of these accounts, you know, can be transferred from other accounts to, to balance it, and I just also noted that, I just remembered, we still have $79,000, you know, in the reserve fund, available. So just some of the areas, and so what we're going to be doing is that Todd and Maureen will be working on this over the next couple of weeks to get a better handle on, you know, overall where the problems are and identify it, and decide whether we can do the transfers jointly between the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, or some of this maybe have to be done at the town meeting, so.
And, and, Rich, we worked on some of that today, and we got some of that already for today, and we'll give it to the Finance Committee, so they'll have it for the 15th, and they can have it on their agenda for the 15th to do some of those transfers.
Okay, great, thank you. But, you know, just so you know, some of the areas that are, quickly, with some of the areas where the problems are, especially in facility salaries, you know, where we got people working overtime and cleaning buildings and, and things like that, fire wages and, fire wages and expenses, that, you know, we did hire two temporary, you know, firefighters to help out on especially, splitting up the shifts so they all weren't working together, rotating, working together on the same shifts. The border health nurse, we're going to need to fund some of all that, animal control, and maybe workman's comp and property liability. But, I mean, Todd and Maureen can say right now, since they're organized today, is there any other major areas that, you know, significant areas that need to be addressed?
No, in fact, we don't anticipate, we don't anticipate asking town meeting to approve any transfers, we believe we can do it jointly with the Selectmen and the Finance Committee, with existing balances from other departments to cover some of these shortages you've mentioned. The only other thing we're going to need to look at as we get closer to year end is whether or not these two changes in source of funds for Park and landfill are enough to mitigate the projected revenue deficit. So it's possible we may need a modest transfer in early July to sort of bridge that gap, but right now, we don't believe, other than the two enterprises, no town meeting action is, is needed this year.
That's great.
Hey, okay. Go ahead. Quick question, it's Brian, how many, I assume we're already tracking, but some of the items listed off sound like things that I would assume we can file for CARES Act later on?
Yes.
Well, absolutely, yeah.
Go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, we, we, our first submission is, is actually a week from Friday, the 12th, and, for example, the two temporary firefighters that Rich mentioned that we've hired, we'll be putting in for reimbursement for their, the cost of those two firefighters. All of the, the overtime he mentioned for our custodial and maintenance staff, but any COVID-related supplies and services absolutely will be submitting for reimbursement through the CARES Act, it's being administered by Plymouth County.
Another example of that, Brian, would be that, you know, we bought some laptops so people could work at home, and those are reimbursable, you know, as well, so, I mean, things like that, you know, and any expenses, as Todd said, having to do with the fire department, and the police department for that matter, having to do with COVID-19. Okay, anybody got any other questions on fiscal '20, and we'll try to get that all together? And overall, this is good news, believe it or not. We don't have to use any of our existing, you know, funding and resources.
This is Jen Sipier, just on, just on what you just said, are you looking at putting into FEMA and MEMA for reimbursements through the CARES Act?
Well, I'll take that if you don't mind. So FEMA, well, the chiefs will most likely be submitting.
PHA.
Some stuff into FEMA, and it, as you know, reimburses it 75%.
Yep, 75 of 25.
Yep, the additional 25%, we can get CARES money to supplement for.
Okay, so just, just because I'm doing some of this work for Bridgewater State University, but I've spoken with FEMA and MEMA, and they will not pay for the equipment for the telecommuting, so you might want to double check, I don't know if it's maybe different for a municipality, but they wouldn't reimburse, so.
No, you're, you're absolutely right, it's the same for cities and towns.
Yeah.
But the CARES Act, it's funds that Maureen referenced that are being administered through.
Okay.
County will cover some of those type of expenses 100%.
Okay.
But you're absolutely right, there are certain things that are not eligible.
They're pretty specific for Plymouth County on what is reimbursable and what is not reimbursable right now. And, and as you know, revenue, lost revenue is not reimbursable, and that's probably the biggest thing that everyone wishes was reimbursable, because we could handle all the other stuff if we were made whole with the lost revenue, but, but as of now, it's just that specific list, and we have that through Plymouth County, and they update us probably every week on changes. They've got a whole website dedicated to it, so we, we get some answers when we need them.
Okay, let's go on to fiscal '21's budget. As you recall, our meeting, I don't know, first part of March, somewhere in there, I forget, that, you know, we were very conservative on our revenue numbers, our revenue projections anyways, and especially having to do with local receipts, so when we looked at the local receipts, which are, you know, things like excise tax and, you know, building permits and ambulance receipts and all this other miscellaneous stuff, we were very conservative in our numbers, and we did not go up significantly. Todd and Maureen and I, you know, reviewed all these numbers once again, and based upon the final numbers for fiscal '20, we feel confident that those numbers should be able to be met. One of the things that, you know, maybe you think about, having to do with building permits or things like that, building permits are going off the wall, I mean, it's, it's crazy, the building that's going on, you know, in town here, so we're not concerned, you know, about that, you know, at all. Our ambulance receipts are up, even though we did have a slow month of April, I believe it was, because there wasn't as many calls having to do with emergencies going to, emergency rules, because people didn't want to go. And so, but that's kind of, you know, turned around, you know, at this point, so the local receipts, we feel, we feel good about, and once again, because I think we were conservative in putting our numbers together. Now, the big question is the, we were on a conference call with Senator Roderick's about a week ago, and, and Senator Roderick's was talking about, he happens to be the Chair of the Senate Ways and Means Committee, who puts the budget together, and we talked about, he talked about, you know, what the options were as far as state aid is concerned, and basically, he gave us three different scenarios. One was level funded, which we would be very happy with, because we don't get a significant increase in local aid anyways. And the second one was a 10% reduction, and the worst-case scenario was a 20% reduction. So what we looked at, when we met Maureen, Todd, and I looked at it, and we said, okay, let's take the middle of the road. So we are projecting a 10% reduction, you know, in state aid, which is roughly $200,000, you know, from the town, as far as that's concerned. So, and that's not using, and we're not going to be using any of that additional free cash that we just talked about, so you know, that's going to stay intact right now, and hopefully it doesn't get worse. So from a high-level standpoint, you know, and these are reflected in the new budget documents that you have received or should receive, and, you know, if you want us to, if you can't pick them up at the town hall, it's a lot of pages to print, let me tell you. Yeah, go ahead.
George has his, I emailed him to him at the beginning of the meeting, he has.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, so some of the issues that, you know, we looked at in reductions that we needed to, we needed to make about $250,000 in cuts, alright? So, I believe we talked about this position at the, when we met, you know, before, the Treasurer currently has budgeted a part-time clerk, and that part-time clerk has not been filled, and that was budgeted a year ago. So we're proposing to eliminate the $38,000 for the Treasurer's part-time clerk. The next item, we have one less student going to Bristol Aggie, which saves us $20,000. We're going to reduce the legal, I, Todd or Maureen, I can't remember the exact number, help me out?
12,000.
12,000.
12,000, thank you. So we're going to reduce that. Now, the other one, the Regional School District. So, the Regional School District, as George knows, he attended the Regional Finance Committee, and in our budget, we had a $688,000 increase over last year. Now, we knew that we couldn't fund that total anyways. So what we're proposing to do is, in talking to the Superintendent and the Business Manager, is that we're talking about reducing that number by $150,000, okay? Now, it sounds like a lot of money, but the region is having benefits of a couple of things. The CARES Act money, they received $250,000 in what they call Title I money, and that Title I money is federal money, and that can be used for whatever purpose. The second thing is, they don't have to pay for transportation. So because the buses aren't running, we're going to get somewhere between $500,000 and $600,000 that we don't have to pay, you know, the bus company. So they felt comfortable, you know, that we would reduce this by $150,000, but there's a problem, potential problem. If they reduce the Chapter 70 money at the region by 10%, that's $1.1 million. That would be a serious problem for the region, okay? We don't know what that's going to be, if they're going to reduce it at all, but that's kind of where we stand, you know, right now, as far as the Regional School District is concerned. Just as a follow-up to what Senator Roderick said told us, supposedly, they're trying to get a, a state aid resolution to the communities by June 15th, that gives us plenty of time. So, we'll just have to see, see what happens, but, once again, I think that, you know, this is probably the best-case scenario right now, that we can, you know, move forward with. So, let's see. Anybody have any questions on what I just talked about, or?
How much was the money?
How much was the money that, the Title I that the school is supposed to receive or have?
They already have it, $250,000.
Okay.
They already got it.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Okay. What else we got here? So for those that have the budget in front of them, the first sheet on the budget, okay? Okay, okay. Everybody all right? No?
Yep.
Okay. So I, I know you guys are all familiar with this, maybe except for Brian, but we did this at the last meeting. And you can, you know, see, you know, where our revenue numbers, you know, are coming from. And what we're using as far as free cash is concerned, what we use for capital, and what we use for overlay. You remember the discussion about the overlay reserve? The Board of Assessors have released $130,000 of that overlay reserve, which was what they were going to do, if you remember our discussion at that meeting. Anyway, so you can see down at the bottom that we have a balanced budget. We have no shortfall. So it's based upon things that we just talked about. I know this is difficult to do this way. But anybody have any questions on the budgets, any items in the budget, you know?
Rich, if I may, this is Todd, just for clarification for the group. And toward the bottom, you'll see a line that's labeled capital, and that number's larger than what was discussed earlier with the capital committee. I just wanted to point out to the group that this line also includes $30,000 for the assessors' software upgrade that's coming, being funded from part of that 130,000 of overlay surplus noted above. And in addition, the regional schools need both communities to assist with some new technology. So there's a separate article, a part from the capital plan, and our share is just over $108,000. So that, that's why the capital line appears at the bottom to be higher than what we discussed earlier this evening.
And just a comment on that, too, is that we're going to get 60% reimbursement from the federal government for that technology.
Right, through the E-Rate program.
But you have to put, you have to put the money upfront. You know, you have to fund it upfront, and then they reimburse you afterwards.
Richard, Brian, was there anything back from the assessors on funding the overlay in FY21? I know there was a lot of discussion on that a couple of months.
Yeah, they did. $130,000, Brian, it's in that sheet.
Okay. I had a number of 200 and something in my head, that's why I was curious.
That, that's what was available, and what we decided to do was to protect at least one, well, actually, two years of overlay, in case there happened to be a big abatement.
Gotcha. Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, we have to talk about the park, don't we? Anything else on the regular budget? And just so you know, you'll see a number in there in the HR section of $225,000. And that's just for raises, if we go ahead with the raises. We're negotiating contracts right now. You know, it could be some step increases or whatever. So that kind of is a moving target, you know, as well.
And so that would be found in the general government section of your detail, Department 152, and it's a line entitled Compensation Reserve. Ultimately, to Rich's point, when the contract agreements are settled, these funds will be transferred to the various departments for the union settlements, a large part of which will go to the Public Safety section of our budget.
A question from Brian, does anybody have a copy that only shows the deltas from what we reviewed in March to the current version?
I guess we can do that.
Yeah, we can do that.
Just to make it a lot easier to find what changed.
Not very many changes.
Yeah, or we can certainly, Brian, just send you a list of the changes, but we'll get, we'll get something to answer that question, sure.
Yeah, that'd be great. Just go in line by line with 60.
Understood. Yeah, agreed.
The other thing Todd had brought up, I guess somebody had requested, I don't know who it was, but requested showing percentage change from the previous year. I, I think that's okay, but I don't think we should do it detail line item by detail line item. Todd, do you?
Oh, no, I don't. I think it should just be maybe, at the functional level, general government, public safety, education, so forth. But it's really the board's call. It's, it's your budget.
So that was at a town meeting last year, and a bunch of residents chimed in and said they'd like it. Let's just say easier to, to, to sort through and be able to see where changes are and in a more compact format.
So one of the things we've talked about doing as sort of a preamble to the operating budget at town meeting is to have Rich or Maureen give a short overview of what the major changes are to the budget being proposed.
So how's the Finance Committee feel? Do we should put the percentages in or not?
It'd be nice to see, sorry, it's George. It'd be nice to see, but I don't, I don't know how deep I'll be diving into that, so I'm indifferent.
Okay.
This is Darren. I'd like to see it, actually. Not, not line item by line item, but at least at the functional level, just a quick, just a quick overview. If something pops out, you can, you can dig deeper, but.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, I, I would share a similar opinion. I mean, if something goes from $10 to $20, showing a giant percentage is a little weird, but the functional level is helpful.
Okay.
Here comes the cat, the newest member.
We've had cats, dogs, kids, I mean, you name it.
Do you have to swear her in?
Like I said, Lakeville's one big happy family.
All right, any other questions on that? We need to talk about the park commission budget for a second. Anybody else on the regular budget? Okay. All right, as far as the park commission, you know, budget is concerned, they have put together a new budget, which I, I believe you should have copies of it, I think. They, their revenue projections from July through the end of September are very little. And a lot of that has to do with no weddings, no events, you know, at Loon Pond, and they're going to be making the final decision about opening Clear Pond Thursday night. But once again, that's a serious revenue shortfall, you know, to do that. And hopefully, the, the the activities, the sports programs will open up in the fall, you know, as well to generate some revenue. So they put together, you know, a budget based upon those projections. And it's about, what is it, about $50,000 less or somewhere in there?
50,000 less of, of revenue, yes. And you'll notice they're, they're relying much more heavily on using their existing retained earnings, about $83,500. We have asked them to, to consider further, when you look at their line items, they have a, at the end of their expense budget, they have a $35,000 capital outlay line. We have asked them to consider, much like our capital plan, to, if they are able to defer some or all of this until the fall, till things are more clear. And that would at least put their revenue projections, estimated revenue, at a lower point that might be more make more sense, I guess I should say. And it is something, when we go to have our tax rate certified and approved in the fall, that the state will be looking quite heavily at both enterprise funds.
So the other thing, too, is we pointed out that they're going to have to use $25,000 in fiscal '20's budget.
Right.
And they're, they're looking to use $83,000 in fiscal '21's budget. They won't have any retained earnings, because if they, because if the year on '20 ends just break even, there won't be any additional, you know, funds available. So that's why Todd is recommending take the conservative approach from capital right now until we figure out where we are. Okay. Anybody got any questions on the park commissions for the budget?
In case, I'd just like to offer that they had a meeting last week, for anyone on the Finance Committee that may not know, they did have a meeting last week. I think their intention was to close the park, but Board of Health gave them some, you know, information on how to open, but I think that's why there was the delay. And they're going to discuss it again tomorrow, but overall, even if I understand that for the sake of the people in Lakeville, they wanted to try to open it up, but it just is not going to make sense financially for them, as far as we can see, because it's not like they can open it up short staff. They still need to hire seven lifeguards. They still need to hire, you know, and they need people to make sure they can keep up with all the cleaning and the maintenance and everything else. So just in case, you know, you guys are wondering, it's been looked at every way possible. Maureen attended their meetings. We've all talked to them. We've met with them. Board of Health people have met with them, the health agents, so I'd be surprised if they open it, but that's their call.
Okay, does anybody else have any other questions on the budgets itself? And certainly, if you have any questions, you certainly can email them to Maureen, myself, or Todd, and, you know, ask any specific questions, or you can certainly call them and talk about any issues having to do with the budget.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, and like we said, this thing is a moving target, you know, something could happen in the next couple of weeks, and it could become worse, you know, just so you know, so.
Okay. A quick question, Richard. Brian, are we backfilling the coordinator position? Because it looks like it's still in, or is that curated for like only a few months in the year, when we think we might get one?
We haven't decided yet what we're going to do.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so George, you're there, George. This is, this is, this is the plan now. So we're going to be approving the, just the warrant articles next week. You don't have to be there. Finance Committee doesn't have to be here. But the warrant review is on the 15th. And we hope that you guys would be part of that, so we can get you to approve the warrant articles, and we can actually print on the warrant articles your approval or rejections, or whatever way you want to go. So is everybody available on the 15th?
Guys, Monday, the 15th, I'm available.
I'm available.
Yes, Darren's available.
Good. Brian, are you available?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, so is there any other questions that the Finance Committee has, or anybody else has about this process and where we are?
No, I think you guys have done a nice job. It's George. I think you guys have done a nice job of articulating the why and why we're going to a budget like this. I don't really think there's any, obviously, there's so much in the air right now that we, we just don't know. So we don't know what we're going to end up with, and I think that the conservative approach is the right way to go. So well done. Got no questions.
Thank you.
I think maybe just, sorry, this is Brian, my original question, which was, I mean, when's the right time for the town to start forecasting what we think we want to do in September? When, when is it normal for the state to start reporting the figures we are going to get? Or is it just?
We're told by Senator Rodrick, who is the chairman of the Senate Ways and Means, that they're going to be giving those numbers to us June 15th. Do I believe that?
The numbers on the 15th, okay.
I don't believe it.
No.
I don't. I'm sorry. I just don't believe it. There's just too many things up in the air, and that's, and that's, you know, two weeks away, less than two weeks away now. And I'd be shocked. And, and the reason why they are waiting for the federal government to come up with some revenue monies to offset the revenues for both the state and the cities and towns. Now, as you, if you're familiar with it, you know, the big battle going on between the House and the Senate. Senate doesn't want anything to do with that. The House has already passed the bill. But I think the good news is that the CARES Act, it's already been approved. The, I forget how many millions it was here in Massachusetts, a million, I think it was a billion. That they're hoping that the federal government will release some of that money to be used for federal, for revenues, you know, numbers for the cities and towns and states. So that's kind of up in the air, but we don't see any activity on that at all. So I am not encouraged to see projections from the state by June 15th. I just don't.
Yeah, that, that seems like a nil possibility.
But once again, trying to protect ourselves, as we did, you know, to try to make sure that people don't get laid off, and we try to protect the services that we have. We still have, I don't want to say a cushion, but we still have monies available that we have not spent, that we're not going to spend until we're ready to find out those numbers. And we'll be back, I'm telling you, we know we'll be back in September with a special town meeting, one way or the other, you know, so.
I did want to say that I think special town meeting, I mean, I'm sorry, at the town meeting, the town moderator has put a new seating plan in place, so if anyone wants a copy of that, I think you guys are still in the same place, but we're all moved around a little bit, so we can anticipate that.
Okay, I don't have anything else unless somebody else goes.
I don't have anything else either. Maureen, do you have anything else?
I say we go line by line. No. Nothing else.
No, I, I think some, I think after the meeting last year, I had the town meeting, I talked to a few people about that, you know, and I think sometimes people don't exactly know what to look for. They want to participate, but they're not familiar. So I think when they see the percentages, at least they're recognizing that there's a difference there. So I would like to see us put the percentages in for that. But again, going back to what Todd said about either Maureen or Rich, I think the more important thing is, instead of people walking in and getting the budget for five minutes before the meeting starts, it would be really helpful. And I know that it is just a crazy time right now, but if we could get some information out to people in that either Rich or Maureen to do some sort of a budget review ahead of time, I think it would really help people. And if it could be something where maybe you could get, you know, like through the Facebook thing.
Well, the plan, the plan would be, Leah, you know, it's unfortunate, because we planned to have it out a week earlier, you know, and we can't. It's impossible for us to do that under these circumstances, but as soon as we have our warrant review on the 15th, then we will make it available on our website and wherever other vehicles that we can, we can provide, you know, the information to, we'll make copies available. They can pick them up at the town hall or whatever. So that, that would be the goal.
But that's even, that's even actually a couple more days earlier. People would at least have the weekend to look at it, so.
Well, we're going to do the best we can. You got to remember, poor Tracy's got a lot of work to do here.
I know.
So, you know, it's just.
I'm available to staple pages together.
We have, we have one that staples it automatically.
We can only hope they'll stick together through the whole meeting.
Anyway, so we'll try to do our best to, we'll certainly get them out there on the website, you know, to let people know they're available, so.
Yep. All right. I mean, I don't have anything else. I don't know if the Finance Committee needs to close their meeting, what you.
I'd like to make a motion to close the. I'd like to make a motion to close, uh, the finance committee meeting at 7:48.
I'll second that motion. It's Jennifer Sipiora.
All those in favor by roll call. Jennifer?
I, Jennifer Sipiora.
Darren?
Hi, Darren Beals.
Brian?
Hi, Brian Day.
Hi, George Willholtz. All right, guys. Have a great night. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Night. Nice work so far. Thank you.
Yeah, good work.
Thanks.
Um, so we did have, um, selectmen announcements, but there really wasn't much to announce because we just had a meeting two days ago. But otherwise, Rich, all we have is new business and old business and any other business that can come before us. So unless you have anything or Maureen or Tracy or Todd, is there anything Todd you have for us? Thank you for your work here. I know you, Maureen and Rich have really been putting in, you know, lots of, uh, lots of time and a lot of reading and what's coming from the state.
No, I'm all set.
Okay, I'm all set too. So unless Maureen, you have anything or Tracy, um, I make a motion to adjourn.
My camera eye in second, excuse me.
All those in favor?
My camera eye.
Baby and I. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.